Good evening. Today is Wednesday, December 2nd, 2020. And I would like to call this meeting of the McComb Township Board of Trustees to order. Time is 7:00 P.M. Now we are going to say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on the nation of God, visible, liberty, and justice for all. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Cusmano?
Present, Frank Cusmano, appearing on location in McComb Township.
Trustee Lucido?
Here.
Trustee Oliver?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Treasurer Gillette?
Here.
Clerk Posey here. Supervisor Viviano?
Here.
All members are present.
Next item, approval of the agenda. Clerk Posey, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have two proposed add-ons under new business. The Assessing Department, number 11, proposed add-on is county-designated assessor agreement. And also, number 12, under the Supervisor's Office, proposed add-on, authorization to establish compensation for human resources director position. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Chair, I move that we approve the agenda with the additions of the add-ons as well, please.
Support.
Any discussion on the motion to approve the agenda? Hearing done. There's a motion on the floor to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Cusmano?
Yep, I believe that you call an order of approving the-
Yep, my Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
And Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, motion carries. Item three is approval of the bills, and as always, we have two separate bill runs. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Support.
Is there any discussion on the motion to approve the bill runs?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I received an update. It's called Board Approval List. And it has... The... It's a one-page document. It shows the $62,781.26. That's detailed in the first part of the board packet. The total of the additional list of $1.76 million, give or take $1,000, is... What is that for? Maybe someone can explain to me why it's not included in the board packet? Or if that's a total, or how... What exactly is the format?
Mr. Cusmano, in addition to that summary page, we all received another bill run list, which would have been the second list. And that's where the majority of the expenditures are at. I believe it includes the nearly $1 million we approved last week for Country Club, and some other significant items, all of which were already board-approved.
Okay, I just checked. The board packet, the most recent one that was uploaded, didn't include it. Should it have been included? Or did I... Am I looking at the version one of the board packet?
Clerk Posey, can you address that?
Yes, I can. Mr. Trustee Cusmano, today you received an email probably approximately sometime this afternoon that has the additional expenses that were... Checks were cut between the time the bill run was presented in the packet today. And that's in your email.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That explains it. I'll have to review that again. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair... Mr. Cusmano, you'll receive that the day of a board meeting? That second part to the bill run every single board meeting on the day off?
I understand now the format.
Okay.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. I appreciate the information.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Cusmano. Any further discussion? Hearing done. There's a motion to approve the bills. Motion by Clerk Oliver... Sorry, Charlie Oliver. Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. And Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, that motion carries. Item four, approval of the previous minutes from November 24th, 2020. Do any of the board members have any additions, deletions, or corrections to the previous meeting minutes?
I'll move to approve the previous meeting minutes from November 24th, 2020.
Support. Any discussion on approving the minutes from the last meeting? Hearing done. There's a motion on the floor by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Lucido. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
And Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, that motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda items. The consent agenda items are routine items that come before the board from time to time. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Move in entirety?
Support.
Support.
Any discussion on the motion? There's a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda items by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, that motion carries. Item five. I'm sorry, that's party consent. On to new business. I'm sorry, public comments. We will now be opening the floor for public comments. Please remember, if you have something to say, that you are limited to three minutes. Bob, can you please open the floor to the public for comments?
The floor is open. If you have any comments, please press star six if you're on the phone, or if you're on the video, just unmute the microphone.
Give it a few more moments to see if anybody wants to try and make a comment. Bob, is there any indication that anybody wishes to make a comment this time?
I'm not seeing nobody raising their hand at this moment.
Okay, seeing as that there are no public comments, we will move on to the next item. Onto new business. Item six is a request to approve the McComb Township Water and Sewer Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Support. Is there discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, Trustee Cusmano, I have some questions for the Engineering Department and the Water Department.
Okay, can you hold on one second? Bob, can you get the Mr. Wanglin and Mr. Van Tiflin's mic open?
Yes.
Wanglin and Mr. Van Tiflin, are you on the line with us?
Yes, we are.
They are.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Trustee Cusmano.
Hello, gentlemen. I had a couple of questions. Do you have the spreadsheet that was provided in the board packet available to answer my questions?
Yes, we do.
All right. First question is, what is the annual fund balance at the end of last fiscal year for the Water and Sewage Department? Are they separate, or are they combined? Or could you tell me the specifics of what the fund balance is for both, one or both?
They are combined together, and it's roughly $40 million.
Okay, and when, if ever, was the last five-year capital improvement plan is passed by the board?
This will be the first one.
Okay. Directing your attention to item 103B, Country Club Sewer Rehab. It's got a 2018 to 2019 budget of 600K. The 2019 to 2020 budget of 775,000, for a total of 1.3 million, 1.375 million. I guess what I'm driving at is... Is there large variances between the budgeted amounts and the actual amounts? That you can explain to me how that plays out? Are there decisions made over the course of the fiscal year that change? Including pressing issues, emergency issues, things like that? Could you explain how it's... The budget is versus actual. In that case, it's $75,000 less. And then one follow-up question to that is, why isn't that Country Club Sewer Rehab included in item 106B? Which is general rehab for sewage... sewer rehab? Did I sufficiently confuse the question, or...
So, the first part of your question. Sometimes projects go over to different fiscal years, and I think that's what you're seeing in the 2018 versus in the 2019. We ended up doing that whole project this year. So that's the 1.3 that you see there. But yeah, when we set up these budgets, those budgets are based on estimates. And the proposed that you're seeing there is based on, we have a contractor, we know what the contract amount is, and so we've got a better idea of what the cost is going to be.
Okay, I'm not an engineer, and I don't think anyone else on the board has engineering training or any technical expertise, so I cut to the chase. In your professional opinions, are the budgeted allocations reasonable in light of historic versus actual costs for these projects in the township?
At the time that we put those estimates together in the budget number, it's our best guess at what the costs are going to be based on what we've seen to this, you know, this point. But we never know what the market is going to do for a project when a project goes over several years. Cost of petroleum goes up, the cost of labor goes up. We can't predict that. All we can do is look back at historical costs and do the best we can to come up with an estimate of what the project will cost the township. Yeah, materials are affecting that, too.
Okay, so those fluctuate, but this is your best estimate, your professional judgment, correct?
That is correct.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion, which I emailed out. Hold on for one moment. And I could screen share it, perhaps. My motion is to accept the... Well, I guess we have to finish discussion on the original motion first before I make an amendment.
Point of order, Trustee Cusmano, if I may, Mr. Chair. The motion before us is to approve the capital plan. Trustee Cusmano, if you have something that you would like to change that motion, you could offer it as an amendment to the motion before the board.
Thank you, trustee. I'm Treasurer Gillette. I make a motion to amend the acceptance of the five-year capital improvement plan to include that pursuant to the five-year water and sewage capital improvement plan, that each project dollar amount awarded, performed, and billed by the vendor and submitted for payment approval by the Board of Trustees be disclosed and identified with the Water and Sewage and Engineering Department by the Water and Sewage and Engineering Department in the applicable board packet item and account number for the fiscal... including the fiscal year-to-date total. It's somewhat long-winded. What I'm looking to do is link up and wed the actual expenditures with the budgeted on an annual basis. So moving forward, we can make any adjustments as are reasonable and necessary. That's my amendment, Mr. Chairman.
I will second the amendment to the motion for the purposes of discussion, because I have some questions about it. I'll second that.
Is there support on the amended motion?
I'd support it.
Oh, you support it?
Yeah, he made the amended motion. I'd support it.
So, is there discussion on the amended motion?
I would ask for a little bit of clarification from Trustee Cusmano. Mr. Cusmano, what your motion would do, or your amendment, rather, would do? Would it be that when the board is presented with paying for a project that's on this list of approved capital projects through the course of the next year, that the Engineering Department and Water and Sewer Department would all provide to us what the estimated cost was? And what... And how that compared to the actual cost? Is that the intent of the motion?
Yes, that's the intent of the motion, Treasurer Gillette. And basically, it's to allow the board to make adjustments rather than to the five-year plan. And I want to make a statement or a comment or an observation. I believe that, and I direct this to Mr. Wanglin and Mr. Van Tiflin, is this five-year plan estimated... estimate anticipated to be used in setting the sewer side of the sanitary sewer side of the rate structure in McComb Township?
The capital improvement program that's before the board is for both water and sewer. And yes, Dawn Lund, the consultant that we use, does use the capital improvement program in setting rates. She's got a lookout five years. We've got a five-year capital improvement program that's before the board. So yes, she is using these numbers. I do want to clarify that the spreadsheet that the board has does have the actual costs that the Water and Sewer Department expended in the previous two years. You know, so that is already something that we put together. So I would like to have some clarification. Is are we talking about when we award the project? Or as we're making progress payments to the contractor?
Mr. Chairman, in answer to that, I'm looking for board approval that the board packet show the projected anticipated amount in the five-year plan, capital improvement plan, and then what the actual amount expended came in at. Because we're setting rates using this five-year capital improvement plan, I think it's in the best interests of residents to keep a fairly tight check and balance to the anticipated expenditure. If it's not consistent, then the board can make an adjustment to the water and sewage rates as is appropriate, rather than locking us into a water and sewage rate setting properties that are not consistent with the actual expenditures, which is a possibility as the... As this plays out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman? I could respond to that. Just so everybody's aware, the township does look at this every year. So every year, this does get updated, and every year that Dawn Lund looks at the rate, she's getting an updated capital improvement program. So as projects get delayed, or whatever the reason, or costs change, she is putting that into her analysis when she comes up with the rate. So it should be reflected in the rate that she is recommending to the board when that comes up.
Mr. Chairman, if I might ask some follow-up questions that have just been raised. Previously, the rates were... The rate was set by... After a presentation by Plant Moran, and then UFS came in later. At one point, I think Mr. Van Tiflin made the presentation himself. Over the years, I've attended most of those meetings. Is it anticipated that Dawn Lund of Utility Financial Solutions will be used over the course of the next five years? By the township? I guess that's an open question to the supervisor and/or the engineer.
I speculate on whether the township is going to continue to use Ms. Lund. We use her now. I have spoken to her. She has gone through the water rate calculations with me, and I certainly had concerns about it, too, having... Knowing what's going on in our neighboring communities with their water rates. So after speaking with her, I'm satisfied that our community has made an honest effort and done everything we can to charge the correct rates as dictated by all the rules and regulations that surround rate-setting. So, but to answer your question, I don't know going forward. I don't intend to stop using her anytime soon. But I imagine if circumstances change, we would change with them. Does that answer your question, Mr. Cusmano?
Yes. Yes, it does, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Again, my concern is, is that the potential exists that we're setting rates based on this five-year capital improvement plan, which may or may not be expended, thus expanding the fund balance and without legitimate purpose. And that's my concern in the event that... Is it my understanding that the five-year capital improvement plan will be brought for review by the Engineering Department and the Water and Sewer... and Water Department every year annually? Because that would vitiate the need for my motion amendment.
That is our intention, yes, yes. Well, if I could add some clarity, perhaps, because I have to admit, I got a little confused myself from the back-and-forth discussion. If we proceed and adopt this current five-year plan, and then we also adopt an annual review in which we will look at both what we project going forward, as Mr. Van Tiflin and Mr. Wanglin have done and do every year, but we can also, at that time, review what we have spent on previous year's projects compared to what we had projected them to be with this same spreadsheet. Would that satisfy your motion, Mr. Cusmano?
Yes, it would. That's exactly what I was articulately driving at. Thank you.
Treasurer Gillette, would you make that motion, please? Well, I suspect that perhaps we wanted to have Trustee Cusmano withdraw his amendment. I withdraw my support. And then perhaps Trustee Cusmano could remake a different amendment to require an annual review of the expenditures from the fund of the capital plan compared to what was projected. So it can be reviewed annually, the expenditures versus the projections on an annual basis.
Before you do that, Mr. Cusmano, can I interject one thing? Mr. Wanglin, Mr. Van Tiflin? Given that our building cycle is through the summer and into the fall, and we typically, like all building projects, go as late as the weather allows us, what time of year do you think would be an adequate time to review all of the past season's projects? I was thinking March or February would be the right time. Yeah, as long as we have the review done in time for the water and sewer rates to be set, that will be fine. And that timeframe works with that, yes. Have we said the first meeting every February? Beginning February of '22? That's fair. That's good.
Because, Cusmano, would that be satisfactory that we annually review every February the anticipated or the approved capital plan compared to the actual cost for the previous construction season?
Yes, Treasurer Gillette, and I would add that the board make any rate-setting adjustments as are appropriate at that time, if any are so.
Well, I think procedurally, then, Trustee Cusmano, you would have to withdraw your amendment. I withdraw my support, and then we will restate it as we just currently constructed it.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I withdraw my amendment.
And I will then withdraw my support.
Noted.
And then, Trustee Cusmano, you could restate your amendment as you now believe it should be structured.
It would be February of every year, then?
Beginning in 2022, after the next full building season.
Okay, then I'll restate the motion, that the annual review of the expenditures under the capital improvement plan, five-year capital improvement plan, be made in... Commencing on February 2022 for Water and Sewage Department, and that the board make any appropriate adjustments to the rate-setting rates at that time, if any are appropriate.
Court. Good, Court. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I just had a quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
What we're voting on is a plan, a estimate, like they said. We would still have to make changes based on, you know, the contractor, you know, their quote, or whatever it is for doing the work, so we can go up or down, you know, as we go along.
That's correct.
And reviewing it every year. We're not locked into this.
No.
This is just something we're saying, for budgeting purposes in the future, here's where we're going for the next town.
Correct. We are... So we're basically tackling two things at once with this one motion. We are doing exactly what you said. We are, for strategic planning and budgeting purposes, we are going to present a five-year plan each year. Also, when we present it, we're going to look back and review what our expenditures were in relation to previously projected items, and make sure that then, that we have not been overcharging our residents on their water rates and, in fact, overbuilding our capital improvement fund.
And I just think after all the discussion, I think the residents would like to hear that we're not locking them into a $40 million bill right now.
No.
That we're just saying, here's what we're going to budget for the next five years.
Yes.
And we can revisit it at any time.
Correct.
And go off and down.
And as everybody knows, even this year, a lot of projects got put off because of COVID. They worked hard in the plan. Things got pushed off. And the plan is only a plan. It's not an action.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? All right. Hearing done. Let me see if I can restate this. There is a motion on the floor to adopt the McComb Township Water and Sewer Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan and to conduct an annual review of the plan in relation to the capital expenditures that were made for budgeted items in the past season's construction. Effectively, is this the motion?
Yes.
I think you left off February.
Beginning in February of 2022. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I believe there was a tale on that, that I indicated that the township make any appropriate adjustments to the rates set if those numbers...
Correct. In addition to what I just stated, that any adjustments to the water rates that were necessary at that time could be proposed and adopted by the board.
Thank you. I was going to say judge Viviano, but I apologize. Thank you, Chairman Viviano.
Ron Viviano. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, that motion carries. Moving on to item seven, it's from the Engineering Department. It's a request to schedule public hearings for a street lighting SAD resolution for Wolverine Estates North Site condominiums for January 13th, 2021. Is there a motion? So moved. Support. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Van Tifflin?
Yes, sir.
Would I call for a vote? Would you mind just briefly explaining this agenda item, please?
Yes, this is a typical requested special assessment district for street lighting. It's part of the requirements under the ordinance for them to, to install streetlights. So this is the public hearing where the board would actually adopt the resolution establishing the special assessment district.
Thank you. There is a motion to request to the schedule a public hearing for the street lighting S A D resolution for Wolverine Estates North Site condominiums for January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one on the floor from Treasurer Drollet, supported by trustee Lucido. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Treasurer Drollet?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Kuzma?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano.
Yes. Motion carries. Item eight is a request to approve change order number two for the twenty-twenty pathway gap closure program in the amount of thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and nine cents. Your motion.
So moved.
Board. Mr. Van Tifflin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members. This is change order number two. This is the final balancing change order. So essentially what we've done is added up all the quantities for the project and compared them to what was in the contract. Some quantities may have gone up, some may have gone down depending on what we found in the field. And this is the results of, of that analysis. So this is a, a, actually a reduction in the contract in the amount of thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and nine cents. This brings the contract down to four hundred fifty-seven thousand, one hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents. Do you have any to answer any questions?
Further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, there is a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Drollet, to approve the change order number two for the twenty-twenty pathway gap closure program in the amount of thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and nine cents. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to correct the motion to indicate it's a reduction in thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and nine cents.
Negative.
Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Drollet?
Yes.
Trustee Kuzma?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
And Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, that motion carries. Item number nine is a request to approve pay estimate number four. The final pay estimate for the twenty-twenty pathway gap closure program in the amount of sixty-seven thousand dollars, sixty-seven, eight hundred and ten thousand dollars and thirteen cents. Your motion.
So moved.
Support.
Van Tifflin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members. This is the same project that we approved the change order in, in the previous item. Now that that change order is, has been approved and the project has now been accepted by the township, we're in a position to make this final payment to the contractor for the work that has been completed. This is again in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and thirteen cents. We are recommending approval.
Here. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. There is a motion by trustee Oliver, supported by clerk Posey, to approve pay estimate number four. Final pay estimate for the twenty-twenty pathway gap closure program in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and thirteen cents. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Kuzma?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Drollet?
Yes.
And Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, that motion carries. Moving on to the building department, item number ten. Which is, building department wishes to purchase five new Lenovo ThinkPads to help facilitate the COVID-nineteen remote work process in the amount of five thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to purchase five new Lenovo ThinkPads to help facilitate the COVID-nineteen remote work process in the amount of five thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Support. Mr. Maples, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The building department requests the approval to purchase the five new Lenovo ThinkPads to help facilitate the COVID remote work process in the amount of five thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars. Attached in your packet is also the letter of process from the township purchasing specialist. Your approval will help the building department, specifically the associate building official and the clerical staff work from home when possible during this COVID pandemic. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Maples. Is there any discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Are these replacing any other computers or anything that they have right now? Or is this just a brand-new thing to help them work?
Mr. Maples, do you want to field that question?
Yes, some of our computers, especially the clerical staff, are at least five years old. So these will be something that they can take home, but they will be replacing their monitor or their towers that they have here. So they will be using them both here at the office and at home remotely.
Thank you. So just to clarify the point, trustee Lucido, there's been some internal discussions that as we replace equipment, given what we've been going through the past nine months, that it is wise to do so with laptops so that all of our staff can be mobile if possible. I do believe that we are eligible for COVID Relief Care Act from the county to reimburse us for these items too.
Thank you.
So is there any more discussion? Hearing none. There is a motion on the floor from clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Drollet, to purchase five new Lenovo ThinkPads to help facilitate the COVID-nineteen process in the amount of five thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Drollet?
Yes.
Trustee Kuzma?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
And Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, that motion carries. Here goes the item eleven, which is an add-on, in the assessing department. For the, for a, to approve a county-designated assessor agreement.
So moved.
Support. Mr. Hickey, are you available?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman and board members. Starting in two thousand twenty-one, the state tax commission is requiring every county in the state of Michigan to have a designated assessor. Every five years, every jurisdiction is audited by the state tax commission. If they fail that audit, they have a little bit, a little bit of time to correct the plan, to come up to the minimum standards. If they don't, then the state would allow the designated assessor to come in and take over and correct those measures.
Oh, just to clarify, you and I spoke about this earlier, Mr. Chairman. This is a position that is staffed by the county. It is actually not a cost to the township at all, correct?
That's correct.
And the purpose of staffing this position is in the unlikely scenario that our assessing department failed to perform as the state expects us to, that the county could then send in a, quote, designated assessor to perform those duties, correct?
That's correct.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Hickey?
I understand that we're just, this is a state requirement that every county adopt a designated assessor in the event that there is somebody in the county who doesn't assess properly.
Correct.
Right. So we're doing what's required by state law, but thankfully, we've got a great assessing department. So we'll probably never be affected by this.
Will not affect us, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. There's a schedule in the event that the services of the county designated assessor is involved per parcel, charges including sixteen dollars for residential. Just as a point of information, am I to understand that the township would be responsible for that? Or would that be passed on to any other entity or if Mr. Hickey could speak on that point?
Yes, Mr. Croc, Kuzma. If we fail the AMAR review, which we're scheduled for in two thousand twenty-one, they would give us a chance to, whatever the deficiencies were, to correct them with a plan. If we would not come up to those standards, then we could either do a few things. You could fire me and hire another assessor or contract with the county to come in or with the designated assessor to cure those deficiencies. But I'm a hundred, a hundred and ten percent confident that we would have no problem passing that AMAR review.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my questions.
Mr. Kuzma?
I have a quick question, Mr. Chairman. Seeing as how it has to be signed off by all the other communities as well, do we know if they've had their meetings yet? I don't know. Have all the other communities signed off or a good portion of them? I think it said the majority of the communities have to sign off on.
I don't know if the other communities have, have their meetings yet. I imagine some of them have. I don't know that, it must be called the county. I don't know. We would.
I think speaking with, in few of our meetings, I think they already have enough signatures to get this through. Bill Griffin, Bill Griffin, who's opposed to become the designated assessor, I think he contracts five of the communities in McComb County.
And one last follow-up to that. I, I did read in there, though, it's not a requirement, but it's strongly encouraged? Am I reading that right?
It depends on who you talk to. We, at our meetings, I think everybody's kind of split on pretty much, talking to a few assessors, I think the majority of them are signing it. I mean, their supervisors or their city managers. I think there's only one assessor that I talked to that, his opinion, and he was trying to convince his supervisor to not sign it. Then that's the only one that I'm aware of that's not for it.
I don't have a problem with it myself. I'm just going through and understanding that, A, there's no base salary for this person. It's only in the event our assessing department failed their audit, which I have the utmost confidence that we will be fine. But if it's something that is not a cost of the township and that the other townships are signing off on, I'm okay.
All right. If there's no more discussion, there's a motion on the floor from clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Drollet, to approve the counted, the county-designated assessor agreement. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Drollet?
Yes.
Trustee Kuzma?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
And Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, that motion carries. Item twelve. Not is, the supervisor's office is seeking an authorization to establish a compensation range for the human resources director position.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the supervisor's office to post the human resources director position with an estimated salary range of ninety-two thousand through one hundred and ten thousand.
Support. I will address this item. I did quite a bit of research around, from our surrounding communities, other townships, other cities, what they, what their pay scale was for their human resources, resources director positions. It all, they all fall within that range. Our neighboring communities, the West Rochester Hills, is currently hiring a, a human resources director. Their stated range and their advertisement for that position is one hundred and nine thousand to one hundred and twenty-six thousand. So considerably higher than this range. But I'm comfortable that the range that we are estimating is adequate to find a very, very qualified human resources director for the township. Questions or comments on this proposal, on this motion?
I have one quick one, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
What's your timeframe, do you think, on this?
If this is approved tonight, we are going to be posting it tomorrow. We believe it'll take a good three weeks or more to get back applications from interesting candidates. That will put us through the holiday period. When we come back from the holidays, a committee will review all the applications and select which candidates to interview. By the time we get through that process, I expect that we will have a suggestion to vet the board on the second meeting in January.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing no more discussion, there is a motion on the floor by clerk Posey, supported?
Drollet.
Supported by Treasurer Drollet, to authorize the supervisor's office to establish a compensation for the human resources director position estimated to be ninety-two thousand to one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Drollet?
Yes.
Trustee Kuzma?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, that motion carries. Brings us to board comments. Trustee Kuzma?
No comment other than to thank my fellow board members for suffering through my tortured motion there. I think we got to what the issue was, and I think it was in the best interest of the residents to have that annual review. And at least prospectively, the possibility for an adjustment to the water and sewage rates to the extent that the component of the capital improvement plan is, is factored into that decision-making process. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome, trustee Kuzma, and we are all in this together. We are happy to help. Trustee Lucido?
No comments.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes, one, one, I want to just remind the public that the planning department is still working on their master plan. And December ninth, we're going to have, I think it might be our last meeting on Calcalbait McComb. And the residents are welcome to participate. We've had a lot of great discussions with a lot of people, residents, business owners, landowners, and it's been pretty good. And we've obtained a lot of information to help for a master plan. So I just want to remind the residents that December ninth, seven P M, Calcalbait McComb, master plan. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you, trustee Oliver. Trustee Nevers?
I have no comments.
Thank you, trustee Nevers. Treasurer Drollet?
Afraid I have to report the sad news that the winter tax bills have been sent out. So expect them in your mail today, tomorrow, very shortly. That's all I have.
Thank you, Grinch Drollet. Clerk's comments?
I have no comments this evening.
Supervisor's comments. Couple of things I would like to announce. The tree lighting ceremony is going on despite COVID. It will be slightly changed. It will be a drive-through event. I encourage everyone to check the township website. But this year's event will be called Santa's Cruise, a drive-through holiday experience. And it will be on Friday night, December eleventh, beginning at six P M. It will run to six-thirty P M. Encourage all the residents to come out, take a look. We're going to have some things set up. We'll have some handouts for the kids. Santa will be there, as well as many of the board members, and we look forward to seeing you. In addition to that, to follow that up, as soon as the drive-through event is over, the McComb Township Parks and Recs Department is putting together a scavenger hunt. We are doing, it's called the Great Silver Bells Family Christmas Scavenger Hunt. Details can be found on the township website, but. But effectively, there will be jingle bells hidden throughout the township. And over the course of the weekend, you will be challenged to find each of them, take a picture, send those things, send the picture back to the township. There's a website, or I'm sorry, there's an email address you can send them to. And any group that completes and finds all the items will be eligible for a prize. So please look that up, and we hope you participate.
Mr. Supervisor, clarification. There's been rumors flying around that Santa's bringing his live reindeer this year. Is that, have you been able to confirm that?
That I, I did hear from Mr. Claus through channels that he was going to bring some of his reindeer to the drive-through event, and they will be on hand to celebrate the holidays.
That's excellent news. Thank you.
The other thing I want to mention, now that you brought that up, his elves will also be on hand. I, I believe they're bringing the reindeer. And the kids are encouraged to fill out Christmas letters. We have forms on the website that they can fill out, bring them, and we will be collecting them, the elves will be collecting them, to return to Santa when he goes back to the North Pole.
Excellent.
Don't forget yours.
Is there postage that they should bring?
I think the elves got that handled.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Scriveter, for the clarification.
So in addition to our holiday festivities, I do want to remind the residents that our ethics board is still accepting applications. I hope you will not only apply, but encourage people that you know who might be a good fit for our ethics board to apply. And that is all the comments I have tonight.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Treasurer Drollet?
Yes.
Trustee Kuzma?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano.
Yes. This meeting is adjourned. The time is seven fifty-two.